Good evening, welcome to the October 13th Board of Education meeting. Our mission statement is by providing an outstanding education, the Lake Mills Area School District inspires our students to be responsible citizens with integrity and lifelong learners in an ever-changing world. I'd like to stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I'll call the meeting to order, can we have roll call, please?
Don Delaney?
Here.
Bob DiNferio?
Here.
Donna Thomas?
Here.
Steve Topol?
Here.
Richard Mason?
Here.
Eli Primar?
Here.
Verification of meeting notice?
We need to go back and swear Eli in.
Eli? Who's our?
Next TV has the paperwork someplace.
Eli, would you go around to the front, please? And we'll swear you in, so you're official.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, alright.
He just needs to sign it, I think.
Have a seat. Verification meeting notice?
Yes, sir, it was in the paper and on the website.
Any agenda revisions?
I just have a couple of additional reports under mine, but nothing, no agenda additions.
We have approval, then?
I would move approval of the agenda as printed.
Second?
Moving in second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved, any community input?
I do, Nate, you want to go first?
Sure.
Just go up to the mic, please.
State your full name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, my name's Nathaniel Foley, I live over in Sherwood Hills Road. I have a couple of concerns I wanted to share with the school board. The first is, I noticed in the last couple of years, a lot of turnover at the elementary school, and we're getting a lot of experienced folks that have been there for a while leaving, and I'm wondering if you're looking into that and doing some exit interviews with these people, and if there's any concern. It seems like an inordinate amount of turnover, and kind of outside what I would call the realm of norm. And if a couple of people leave, it's not a big deal, but when a sizable percentage of your staff has gone over a couple of years, is that something that concerns you, and what are you looking into about it, and what do you think you'd do to kind of stem that flow? You don't want to lose too many experienced educators and staff members if you can help it. Ends up costing money and retraining and waiting for teachers to get up to speed, a lot of programs actually make the teachers come and assistant teach for a year or two before they let them go, but, so that's a concern of mine. The other one was, I was just wondering, you know, with the savings that we're going to have in the elementary school, is that going to be returned to the taxpayer, so that when the time comes for the high school to be redone, there's less of a feeling of, oh no, here we go again with another tax burden for us, or how is that money, that's the savings that's supposedly going to be enough to repay the outlay over some years, going to be returned in some way to the community, or if it isn't, why not? Those are my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Any additional?
Melissa was going to be next, yeah.
Same thing, name and address.
I'm Melissa Fearman, I live at 230 Stonefield Drive, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. The first thing is, I'm a PTO board member, and I handed out a little sheet to you guys with our up and coming events. You can read it when you have time, we just want to let you know you're always invited to our PTO events and meetings, and it's just a little brief information about what's going on next with us. This is not PTO related, this is a parent-related question from myself, I had to write it out because I'm not a very good speaker. As a parent, I'm very concerned about the number of teachers and staff we are losing at our elementary school, and I am not alone. There are many parents that are wondering why our teachers are leaving, many have written letters or made phone calls to the school board. I hope more will attend school board meetings and voice their concerns. During the summer of 2013, I wrote all the school board members when we had lost eight teachers, including the entire second grade staff, because I was concerned. At that time, I had heard that the possibility of exit interviews with an outside source would be looked at. This year, from what I can figure, we have lost at least another eight teachers and staff members again. We have lost very experienced teachers with many years at our elementary school. I'm wondering why we continue to lose so many experienced and wonderful teachers. We even lost a teacher after the school year started. What would make teachers want to leave? We have a beautiful new building, the teachers and staff suffered through a year of construction last year, why would they leave now? I'm wondering if these teachers and staff that are leaving were offered an exit interview by a third party. I was reading past school board minutes and saw that an update on exit interviews was given by Dean Sanders at the December 9th, 2013 school board meeting, but from the minutes, I cannot tell what was in the update. Then, during the January 13th, 2014 school board meetings, Dean Sanders gave another update on exit interviews, but again, I cannot tell what was in that update. I haven't been able to find any other reference of exit interviews in board meetings since the September 13th meeting, and I'm wondering what was decided about exit interviews. Are we giving our teachers and staff the opportunity to have an interview by a third party? I've been trying to understand why we're losing so many teachers. Are we not supporting our teachers with good pay and benefits? Is there something else going on that is driving the teachers to leave? What can we do to retain these experienced and beloved teachers? We have a beautiful new school and a wonderful community, why are so many teachers leaving? If we have exit interviews, maybe we'll find an answer to our questions and help retain our wonderful teachers. We need to seriously look into why we're unable to retain quality and experienced teachers. One thing we cannot easily replace are experienced teachers. A building is just a building, it is what is inside that matters. We need to make sure that we are taking care of what is inside our building, we need to take care of both our teachers and students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I have Mrs. Morris. Yes.
Hi, I'm Brenda Morris, I'm a high school English teacher here at the high school, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Lake Mills Education Association, the Lake Mills Education Support Professional Association, and the Lake Mills Associated Staff Organization, and we're all pleased to report that the school year continues to go well overall, despite some concerns about some larger class sizes in some areas. The dedication of the new elementary school was fun for students with the appearance of the Lorax, and also the teachers there really appreciate the amount of natural light they get with all the windows. We're looking forward to the upgrade on Friday to our wireless internet, so we can continue to make best use of the numerous technology opportunities that our district offers for students. And in addition, we're pleased at the start of a new district-level leadership committee, and we look forward to the start of the new salary schedule committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, I've just got a comment.
You can, if you wish.
Okay. It says that we'll take no action on any of the items that they discussed, but it doesn't mean we can't give them an answer. The answer is yes, we have implemented exit interviews by a third party, we got the first round of data last month.
Last month, that's why you wouldn't have seen the minutes, because they're not approved and on there yet.
And I know that another set went out after, just before that meeting, for some of the other teachers. Yep.
Okay, recognition of award winners. I'm going to have the board come up to the front here. Hopefully. do. These are our staff that have given 25 years or more service to the district, and some of them are unrecognized, and we'd like to recognize them now publicly. And the first one is Elaine Mashie, and she's not here tonight, but I'd like to read something about her. Elaine has worked for the district for 25 years. I've worked with Elaine for the past nine years. Elaine is one of the most dependable, thoughtful people I have worked with. She is always willing to help anyone who needs it, always thinking ahead, great with her students. She is like a kitchen manager. Elaine is out on medical leave, and we all look forward to her return. Sincerely, Bob Staff, and he's the food service director. So, let's give her a round of applause, even though she's not here. Second one is Diane McFarlane. Could you come up, Diane? Or you can stand right here while I read that, so don't go away. Alright. Diane grew up in Lake Mills and went to Prospect Elementary School as a child. She has many fond memories of her life as a child in Lake Mills, and came back here to raise her family in 1983. She wanted her children, Keith and Angie, to have the same wonderful experiences. Diane taught summer school, was a substitute, and taught swimming lessons when she moved back, and eventually taught various grades at Johnson Creek Elementary School for five years. In 1989, when there was an opening in Lake Mills, she thought that it was a dream come true to teach in the school where she attended as a student. For 20 years, she taught second grade, then moved to teach fourth grade for the past five years. Diane's thoughts include, "I feel proud to have been a member of the Lake Mills School District for the past 25 years. Seeing the smiling faces greet me each morning makes me energized to provide the best education possible for those amazing kids. The parents, students, and staff in Lake Mills have been wonderful to work with. I couldn't ask for a better place to live and work. Teaching children is a privilege. This job is very rewarding and a challenge each day. My goal is to make a difference in the lives of children every day. Starting this 26th year in my career, I feel privileged to teach in a brand-new building where students and teachers learn and grow in a new and refreshing environment. I feel that I'm continuing to learn and grow as a teacher, and look forward to all of the years ahead. I appreciate the support from the school board and the community for making this a once-in-a-lifetime experience for me." So, congratulations, Diane. Our next award recognition goes to Kathy Weline. So Kathy, come on down here. Hi.
I'm short and sweet.
Yeah, well, that's alright, that's alright. "I started working at Prospect Elementary School in 1989 to sub for a secretary that had come to the high school to work on a school report. I worked half-days and had to pay half my insurance benefits, so my paychecks were around $50 for two weeks. After that year, I was transferred to the high school and started full-time work with Dale Wenger, who was in charge of sending out the constituent, what? The constituent? The school community paper. Around 1993, Mr. Liedholm, the guidance counselor, needed help in the guidance office, and Mr. Forrest, the principal athletic director, needed help with athletics. So, that's where I am now, guidance and athletics secretary, and there's never been a dull moment." So, congratulations. Alright. "I was born and raised in Lake Mills, graduated in 1976 from LMHS, attended UW-Licrosse, and in 1979 was hired by John Litcher for the position of superintendent's secretary. Today, I'm still the superintendent's secretary, and happy to be working with the superintendent, Dean Sanders, for the last 11 years. I have watched school buildings that I attended being torn down and new schools being built. Technology, well, what can I say about technology? I started out using a typewriter, duplicator, and mimeograph machine. Some of you probably remember that. Today, I'm still trying to figure out how to use some of the latest technology. I married a Paul Wagner who runs our business, Knuth Carpet Care. My children are Christopher Trimborn, his wife Kimberly, and the newest addition to my family, my grandson Jackson, who live in Lake Mills. My daughter Haley Trimborn, who also lives in Lake Mills, and my stepdaughter Kristen Wagner, who is attending school at UW-Whitewater. It has been a pleasure working for the Lake Mills Area School District these past 35 years, and I thank all of my coworkers and friends for being part of my life in Lake Mills." Congratulations, Patty. Let's give these people one more round of applause. If you want to leave, you can, you don't have to stay. You too, yeah. It's going to bail on us.
That's all about Patty, that's what it's all about.
It's a big commitment.
Alright.
She said she's only been in three different buildings.
Consent agenda, the minutes of September 8th, regular meeting.
I'll move approval of the minutes of the September 8th, 2014, regular meeting.
Second? Moving in second to approve the September 8th, regular meeting minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously. Vouchers and invoices for September, and the treasurer's report for August and September.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoice in the amount of $1,731,533.16 for the month of September, and the treasurer's report for August and September of 2014.
Second? Moving in second to approve the vouchers and invoices, and the treasurer's report. Could we have roll call, please? Please. Don Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. DiNferio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Steve Topol?
Aye.
Richard Mason? Aye. And that passes unanimously. Administrative reports, Mrs. Sevrud.
Hi, I'm here today to talk a little bit about the school report cards that we get issued by DPI. So I'm going to take you through the areas of the school report cards, and the board members should have them in front of you, if you'd like to look at the school report cards as I'm talking, they're stapled together. The first area that DPI looks at is student achievement, and this is basically the scores of our students who take the WKCE. And what DPI does is gives us one and a half points for every student who scores advanced, one point for every student who scores proficient, and half a point for every student who scores basic. They take the scores over the past three years, add up the points, divide it by the number of students we had, and that's how we get the score of like 33.7 in reading achievement, and 39.4 for our math achievement for the district. Okay? So, I'm not going to read all the scores off, because you can read the screen, but one thing I'd like to point out is that we are doing better than the state average in this area, which is a really good thing. We'd like to see these scores continue to go up, but we feel like we're doing really good things to make that happen. The next area that DPI looks at is student growth. And what they do is they take all the students who have been here a year, and they compare their score from 2012 to 2013. And if they've moved up an area, we get points for that. If they move down an area, so if they move from proficient to advanced, we get points for that. If they move from proficient to basic, we lose points for that. That's all they explain of how that's calculated, we don't know how many points we get for what. But again, this is an area that we're doing better than the state, which is good. The next area is closing gaps. And this is one of the areas I'm going to go into a little bit more depth, because it took me a little while to figure out, how do they calculate these scores? And this is an area that we are not doing as well as the rest of the state. So this is an area of focus that the administrative team is looking at to see what we can do to make this stronger on our school report card. So the first area is closing reading gaps, students with disabilities. And what DPI does is takes the scores for the past five years, and they compare, you'll see a trend line here. That's, the top one is students without disabilities, the bottom line is the scores for students with disabilities. Now, this one's a nice one, because you'll see that the light green line is actually trending up, and we are actually closing the gap. It's not closing it really quickly, but we're actually gaining with students with disabilities in reading, something we're proud of. Closing the reading gaps with economically disadvantaged, this one's pretty obvious to read, that it's not going in the right direction, that we're widening the gap over the past five years. This is something that we want to look at, we want to see why this trend is happening, and we want to make sure that we're working to change the trajectory so that it is closing the gap. And the next one, closing the gap for reading for Hispanic students. This is another one where the trend is going in a direction that we don't really appreciate, don't really like. So we need to get that trend going the other way, we're going to be looking at things to do that. Now, these are the only three areas that they could look at for us, because you have to have a cohort of at least 20 students. So, students with limited English proficiency, they couldn't look at that for us, because we didn't have 20 students in that group. But if you're looking at Hispanic, you can also see that chances are that our limited English proficiency students are not doing as well, especially since when I looked at it, we had a year where there was zero scoring proficient or advanced in reading. So that's not something we want to see again. For math, you're going to see some of the same type of stuff, it's a little bit better, the trend is moving up. Again, this is students with disabilities, we are closing the gap with students with disabilities in math. Economically disadvantaged, it's widening, but just barely. Our score, the students that are economically disadvantaged is almost staying the same. What's making the gap widen is that our students who are not economically disadvantaged is actually going up, so it's causing the gap to get a little bit bigger. Not much. Closing the math, for closing math gaps Hispanic, the same kind of thing is happening there. We're not really doing better or worse for our Hispanic students, but our students who are white, not Hispanic, are doing slightly better, widening the gap just a tad again. The other areas that the state looks at is on-track and post-secondary readiness. All of these areas, again, were above the state average, which is a good thing. But it's taking some of those things, like graduation rate, where we're almost at 100% of our students graduating, in both the four-year cohort and the six-year cohort. Not quite there, but almost. Attendance rate, we're in the 96th percentile for attendance for just about all of our students. And third grade reading and math achievement, I don't know why they put that in there twice, but that's the indicators that they chose to look at for post-secondary readiness. And then ACT participation, this is something that I actually see them taking out of the school report card, changing for next year, because all students are required to take the ACT in 11th grade across the state this year. What they'll probably change it to is something along the lines of just performance-based, to see how students do. But we're actually above the state average in that area, too. For the student engagement indicators, test participation, absenteeism, and dropout rate, we met all of the needs that we needed to, so we did not get deductions on the district or on the high school or elementary or middle school reports. So our overall accountability score for the district, elementary, middle, and high school, all scored in the exceeds expectations area, which is good, that's a really good thing. We want to make sure that we're solidly there, we want to make sure that we continue to score there, or even higher, and the next score up. So we're very proud of the work that's happening, we are seeing trends, especially in math, this past year of scores, scores increasing, which is a good thing. So that's DPI report cards.
That's very good.
Thank you. For a summer school report, I gave you a little sheet with some facts on it. I came this year in the middle of summer school, so it was already started, and the hard work had already been done, so I got to appreciate the fruits of Mr. Wellman's labor and a couple other people's labor. But we had 904 students enrolled in the summer program this year, which meant, translated into 80 resident FTE, which is what we get to collect, how we get to do enrollment on. We have two non-resident FTE, which means that we take students from other districts, or who, students who are open enrolled into the district, want to stay here for summer school, but we don't get to collect the money for those students. We also had 13 student volunteers helping teachers this year, they got to earn some, take that for summer school credit, which was a wonderful thing to watch them helping other students. So I also gave you some data on what kind, how many sessions we had. We had four sessions for pre-K students at the church, at the Moravian Church. We had 56 sessions for kids in grades kindergarten through third grade, and out of those 56 sessions, there were 49 different options for kids to choose from, which is really awesome to see. 43 sessions for kids in grades four through eight, with 41 different options for them to choose from, and 12 sessions filled for ninth through 12th grade, with seven different options. And that included stuff like weight training, or band, or orchestra, things like that. I was told that enrollment is actually down a little bit this year, and some parents actually claimed that the reason, part of the reason was that students weren't going to be attending the school that they would have attended, like 4Kers. Part of the reason parents want their kids to go there is to get them ready for elementary school, or ready for the place that they're going to attend, and since it wasn't at their building, they didn't see why that, why they should transition them to a school that they weren't going to attend. So you can see, we used about four rooms at the Moravian Church, we used about 32 of the middle school rooms, and 11 rooms at the high school. Any questions?
How many FTEs did we generate this year?
For staff?
No.
Or for students?
Students, FTEs.
Sure, 80 resident FTEs.
Okay. And what was last year?
That I do not know.
Oh, that's, okay, I can look it up at home.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson?
Good evening. Speaking of data, I wanted to go through that this last week was our data retreat, several data retreats with each grade level team. We were looking at the trends within each of our grade levels to see how are our students doing, where are they exceeding our expectation, where are some enrichment needed, and where are some interventions needed. And as Ms. Sevrud pointed to, math is in really great shape. Our students are, according to the measure of academic progress, our MAP assessment, our students are doing very well in the area of math. So we are putting together some math enrichment groups for our students, and then additionally, at each grade level, we're looking at some intervention groupings to be used during what we call LCAT time, our intervention and enrichment time. This week, some of our teachers are being trained in new reading interventions, some research-based interventions, to continue to close those achievement gaps that you're seeing on our state report card. In September, during our in-service, we had an early release, and our teachers were learning more about independent reading assessments. So this is an assessment tool that we're utilizing to dig deeper into students' comprehension levels, so that we can really, with fine, more precision, be able to figure out what's going on in the reading brains of our students as they're comprehending longer books, such as our chapter books in grade second, third, and fourth. And then finally, our dedication was this Friday, I thank you for participating in the dedication, we had community members there, parents were there, to dedicate our building to our children and celebrate everything that has been accomplished. So, school board members, thank you for your support through this entire process. Any questions? Mr. Topol?
Sure. This will tie back to my question from last year.
Okay.
About math, in comparison, if we look at our scores for this last year, we did really well in math at elementary, and we did really well, a big improvement at the middle school also. I think some of that, I think we can associate with probably the math program, the everyday math program. What other, what other programs, for example, last year I talked about Kettle Moraine being at like 74%, you know, what do we need to get to that level?
In the area of math?
In the area of math.
So things that we're looking at are really trying to individualize instruction for our students. So we talk about this idea of being able to meet students right where they are and bring them as far as they can go. So in math, some things that we're utilizing at our different grade levels are our student response systems, or our sentios, so that students have automatic feedback as they're progressing through their journal pages and the work that they're doing. Teachers are also pulling together small groups for enrichment and intervention, and then we're looking at continuing then we're looking at continued enrichment programming for our students, utilizing programs like the middle school is using with Alex. We utilize a computer-based program called Dreambox and Successmaker, so that we're really targeting the different skills that students have. We also utilize an intervention program called Number Worlds at our primary grade levels. Again, as a program that builds a number sense, that foundational skills for students. Some students that we find in kindergarten and first grade, when those, that number sense, that foundational skill isn't quite there, we need to fill that in before they can progress with the other strands of mathematical thinking.
Okay. And most of that's internet-based?
Most are computer-based, Number Worlds is not. That is a teacher-directed, small group.
Okay. And then, one of the things we talked about this week in our, in our meeting as far as co-curricular, and, and that was access of ELL and economically disadvantaged to those types of computers and software and internet and that type of stuff. And that was one thing we were looking at, how could we create some type of program or enrichment for them either after school or whatever, so that they can, you know, help close that gap?
Sure. And at the elementary level before school, we have a parent educator who has lighthouse programming. So we have Successmaker, one of our intervention programs, that students come before school and are able to utilize the computers for that program.
Okay. Have you looked at their specific improvements? Like for those kids that were part of Lighthouse?
Do you mean just to see, is the lighthouse program in and of itself making a difference? It's hard to tease out, is it just that program or is it everything that we're doing throughout the school day? Because oftentimes, the students who are coming for the lighthouse programming also have intervention programming within the school day as well, so it's hard to tease out which piece of the puzzle is making the difference.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Thank you. Ms. Nicholson?
I'm not sure if I've shared this honoring pathways with you in the past, but we are using a design, the UBD's design, at the middle school. So what this is are my big ideas and my essential questions that I use with the staff on honoring pathways, kind of everything that is generating behind what we do. So, like, one of the big ideas is intrinsic motivation. Teachers need to be intrinsically motivated and kids need to be intrinsically motivated. So what does that look like with educator effectiveness? What does that look like in the classroom? It works for the teachers, it works for me, it works for the kids, it's kind of a, we call it a permeable membrane. And then below that are the essential questions. So these are questions that you can ask anywhere in life, and they can be asked at school. So under intrinsic motivation, what does it feel like or look like to be intrinsically motivated by something? So when I talk to the teachers and I coached them through their SLOs, I asked them, what is it about teaching that motivates you? What brings you your biggest joy for teaching? And then we went back and developed their SLOs from that, as opposed to what data do you have? So let's develop an SLO. So these are the things that we're constantly reviewing as we consider professional development. I have Kathy Larson coming in, she's doing some coaching that has to do with trust and metacognition. We had Tony Frontier come in and he, you know, evaluation, multiple ways of demonstrating competency, he worked with that, and we'll be using those people throughout the year. But even things like our MAP testing and our DANCE, all these things are starting to be impacted by this. We just had our reward day the other day, and reward day used to be about, you don't go on the trip if you don't have your homework done, period. And it's so much more than that now, when you start looking, what intrinsically motivates a student? Why aren't they getting their homework done? Can we let them go if they get their homework done? Is it even about homework anymore or is it about a different way of demonstrating competency? So we're, we're kind of going through a growth curve at the middle school because some of our basic things that we've always done are really shifting, and, and it's kind of fun. So, like I said, we had MAP testing this month, our first DANCE, our first reward day, lots of fun stuff, and, and a full moon we had at the middle school this month with a lunar eclipse. It was, it was quite fascinating to watch. Any questions for me?
Hey, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Strike?
Good evening. Lots of things that I've been filling you in on for the last couple of months, Eli will take this evening, so I'm going to concentrate on things that have to do directly with staff. After we moved from homecoming, the big project at Lake Mills High School was implementing ACT Aspire testing, which is the new ninth grade testing. And there was a lot of trepidation and anxiety around this. We had a special schedule where we brought freshmen in last Tuesday and Thursday, and the other students had other activities or they had a late start. And it was an online testing, so it was the first time that we got to really have 100 kids online taking this unknown state test. And it went wonderfully. We had a few hiccups, but as we talked to our friends around the state, we had just a really great experience. And that was definitely due to Chris Ernieak, Brad Mosher, Anna, Margot Trinidadoo, Diane Sweeney, they worked into the night and they did everything they could to have all the students ready. And the kids were anxious about it, too. And so it was so great that they could walk in. We had a few JavaScript issues the very first day, but we built in an extra hour so that we could take care of those issues, and it really went very, very well. And a bonus was, we had 100% attendance. And I don't know if you know about state testing, but usually you're kind of following up, following up, following up, and so I really appreciate all the freshmen really stepping up and taking that test very seriously. So that has consumed us for, for a couple of weeks. As Jen mentioned, some of the staff development things that we're doing, we are working with Tony Frontier to talk about what we like to call meaningful feedback. It's more than just grading, how do we give kids timely, meaningful feedback so that they can move forward? And in preparation for these new brains that we're getting from the middle school that are experiencing personalized learning and all the things that Jen is talking about, we're starting to do some activities around that as well. Ms. Nicholson and I went to a workshop last week about personalized learning and how that translates into high school planning. And then we will continue that discussion at our multi-district in services, in-service next week, or, excuse me, at the end of October. Also at that time, we're going to do some more staff development, we're rolling out something called Course Learning Center. Our parents got very used to using Schoology last year, which is a portal where everyone enters, they can see their students' homework, they can get all kinds of classroom notes, classroom videos and all those kinds of things. Schoology went from being free to being very expensive, and so we shopped around and we found a product, and we're going to be launching that and doing some training about that during staff development as well. One last thing I'd like to mention is, I wanted to remind everybody that November 3rd is parent-teacher conferences, and those are from noon to 8:00 PM. And that would be a great time for parents to come in and not only talk to teachers, but to talk to us a little bit about the technology and some of the new things that we're rolling out. So I invite parents to that. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chady?
Good evening. We'll begin tonight with the enrollment report from our Third Friday Count, which was held on September 19th. I did provide the board members with a pink sheet that kind of summarizes the Third Friday figures. And before I continue on, I'll just give all the accolades to this, go to Roseanne Punsel, who is instrumental in facilitating this Third Friday Count and does just a great job with it. So the Third Friday Count is essentially a formula that takes place. You start off by counting the number of heads that are in the school on the Third Friday of September. If they are absent on that day, you can count them if they attended school one day prior to September 19th and a day after September 19th. And just for simplistic sake, then you subtract out your non-resident attendees, thank open enrollment in to Lake Mills. Then you add in your resident attendees out, open enrollment out, and that essentially equates out to the adjusted head count. Trust me, it's a lot more complicated than that, but that's kind of how it goes. So, the comparison before you that Roseanne put together, the adjusted count for September 2014 was 1,473 students, is compared to September of 13, 1,470 students, so three more students in the district. However, when you factor in the full-time equivalent, preschool special ed is factored in at .5 FTE, and our 4K is factored in at .6 FTE. Our full-time equivalent students here for September of 14 was 1,433, as compared to last year, 1,429, so a plus four. Unfortunately, our revenue limit assumption was based on a plus 12, so it's going to be less than that, along with many of the other adjustments that'll be going into the budget here later this week and next week as well. Speaking of the budget, our state aid eligibility is certified on Wednesday, I believe, the 15th. Shortly thereafter, the DPI will be releasing their new revenue limit worksheet, and then we'll begin work in earnest on the necessary budget adjustments from there. Speaking of which, I would like to try to schedule a finance committee meeting for next week, Thursday, hopefully, the 23rd. And Steve and Don, I'll be in touch to try to figure out what time in your schedule hopefully will accommodate us on that evening or, or day. Previously mentioned this evening was our internet upgrade. I believe that one of our speakers spoke about that earlier. Since the beginning of the school year, we've had some, some challenges, probably is the best way to put it, with regards to internet connectivity. We've been able to diagnose what that issue is, and that is related to the antenna systems that are on top of the towers at the elementary school, the middle school and the high school. Just quite honestly, too much demand trying to push through those antenna systems and those systems not having the ability to, to handle that. So we do have a replacement scheduled for Friday of this week, which will hopefully rectify that situation. Also, I would just like to note that this week is also National School Lunch Week, so our thanks go out to those that oversee our school lunch program and Mr. Step and his staff, working with our students and providing them with school lunch every day. One other item real quick is, we have our flu shot clinics, probably the board members have seen the emails, our first of which is tomorrow at the middle school library from 3 till 5. And the follow-up one will be the following week, Wednesday, the 22nd here in this very room at the high school from 3 till 5. Last year, we vaccinated just over 60 employees and dependents, and this year, we're already pushing 80. So, just trying to do our part to make sure people stay healthy.
So is that, is that the word, vaccinating them or somebody else is vaccinating them?
We are contracting with Home Health United, who's partnering with Dean Health.
So liability's on them if there's?
Correct. Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
That's a good point.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sanders?
I think we'll begin tonight first with Mr. Douglas. Mr. Douglas, most of you know from Myron, has been working with the Facilities Committee as we've talked about, some remodeling and some work in this building. And so we've asked him tonight to come here and speak and give everybody some ideas of where we're at. So I'll turn it over to Greg.
Thanks, Dean. You should have two packets. There's kind of, there's one that looks like this, so we'll start with that. So there's a core set of improvements to the high school that we've been talking about for a few months. We've sorted those out and we've got some quick descriptions. On the, on the first page, kind of covers the upper level of the high school here, and you'll see a lot of different areas that are highlighted in green. Those are areas that are not currently air-conditioned at the high school, and you can kind of see the breakout by area as far as how we would propose air conditioning, those specific areas of the, of the high school. And then there's some window replacements primarily in this wing of the building where there's some single pane glass that's left. And you can see kind of a box there describing replacing those window units. And then while we're doing that, there's some older unit ventilators, that would be the time to really replace the unit ventilators that penetrate those window openings. And you can see the description, all the associated work, so there's ceiling work and some structural work and wall patching and modifications associated with that. So that's the air conditioning, and the window replacement is on the first page. And on the second page, there's one set of toilet rooms on the lower level of the high school, that's still original vintage. So we've got a description, kind of tune up those restrooms, similar to the work that we did upstairs a few years ago at the high school. So that's the lower level work.
Mr. Douglas, those, those will then be brought up to current ADA standards?
Yeah, correct. That's, that's correct. So there'd be reconfiguring the fixtures and upgrading the finishes, like we did at the upper levels. Good point, Bob. Then the next page, there's, there's three sheets in a row. The first one is a sketch of some parking adjacent to the auditorium, so if you're kind of looking at the sheet, the upper part of the sheet is near the green space adjacent to your main driveway. And you'll kind of see a big parking area that would circle around, and there'd be a drop-off area near the auditorium. So you see kind of a drop-off point that I've got labeled there, then a wider sidewalk that loads people into that auditorium entrance to kind of get your bearings. And so that's kind of the layout. The next sheet overlays that sketch with an aerial, so you can kind of see how it fits into the site. And then there's some scope to speak to the new concrete walks, new asphalt paving, new light fixtures, some curb and gutter, and plantings. Then the next sheet shows kind of how the stormwater would be managed for that parking area. So there's a red line that's shown that's buried below our new asphalt parking lot, and then it would feed down at the existing ditch line. There'd be some stormwater retention at the bottom of the hill near the football field, and there's actually a catch basin on the other side of the fence toward the fields where the stormwater would discharge into. So that's kind of the sheet that shows the utilities. Again, these are pretty sketchy sheets, just enough for us to get numbers. Does that make sense so far in the scope? Yeah? Okay. Then the next sheet has the cost breaking down kind of à la carte in those same categories. So the first column is the cost for the toilet rooms on the lower level, second column is air conditioning, all the green areas. The third column is replacing the windows. The next three columns are kind of associated, there's the window replacement, then if you want to put operable awning windows, similar to what is in the area here now, there'd be a slight add for that. And then while we're replacing the windows, if you want to replace those unit ventilators, that would be a great time to do that, is that cost. So those three numbers are all kind of tied to the window replacement. And then the last column is for the auditorium parking lot. So if you look at the numbers, we did assume, we've got a little bit of a contingency to kind of get us through the design process, and we did put an inflation factor to get us out to 2015 cost is what this assumes. So this assumes that it would be next year work. Then at the very bottom, there's a couple of miscellaneous projects, if you will. There's a storage shed that could go in the parking lot by the auditorium, and then there's some roofing replacement funds. So those are some district projects that would be outside the construction, but we've got funds for those on the bottom. So that setup kind of is an à la carte menu for the base projects, and I'll jump to your other packet, which looks like this. So the first picture is a photograph of the existing facade outside the library wing, where the old signage used to be and the question came up. As people drive into the site, that's the first side of the building that the public sees, what could be done to that area to improve it? So there's a series of renderings, the next three shots. One of them is kind of a bird's eye view looking down at that same area, and I'll come back to what happens in each one of these, but the first one is a bird's eye shot. The next one is another bird's eye shot from the entrance to the school. Then you've got one kind of a shot looking from the parking lot toward the school. And the last one is a direct line of sight down the sidewalk as you walk up to the back portion of the school. Okay? So I'll talk through what we're anticipating or thinking in this, this design. So as you look at it, the idea for this design was, how do you, one, improve the facade, but probably more importantly, how do you get some beneficial use out of the space out there in that part of the site? It's got a lot of green space outside, it's really, it's got the opportunity to be a nice benefit to the school. So the thinking is that we would add some skylights into the existing roof system there to pull some daylighting. to pull some daylighting deeper into this roof area to benefit the library, and then create an outdoor learning space outside. So you can kind of see, we've taken off that metal facade, extended the roof line. We've got some brick planters that are around each column, and then some benches between those. And then you can kind of see some screens that are up high. So right now, you could plant potted plants and kind of create some green living-wall elements between the columns to kind of soften up that space and provide some degree of separation between the outdoor learning spaces and the drive that comes up in the green space. So those are some of the features of the design as you kind of pick through the building. And we would anticipate there's some masonry infills between all the windows, that those would be repainted with some colors to kind of tie into the canopy, so those elements tie into the roof structure. So with that, you could have a new roof on top of this back half of the library, some skylights outside, some rework of the metal, then replacement of the broken concrete to make it suitable for outdoor learning space. So that's the idea. Then the cost is the last sheet that you can see on there. And that again, right now, does assume that would be in $2,015.
Questions?
Questions on either packet or piece of information?
I have a roof question.
A roof?
Question. We used to have a roof plan, about replacement of roofs. And now I'm thinking we're to the point where the only place we could have roofs that need replacing are here at the high school, right? Is that plan still in existence, or has it been adjusted?
That's where you got this one here, was off that plan, where it says roof replacement on the first sheet.
Yep.
That was off of that plan that we've had and updated, I think, two years ago.
That would reflect one section here at this building.
Which one, you know?
Which section?
Yeah. It was all divided into sections.
There are at least 15 different roof sections on this building, and I hate to admit that I don't know which one that represents.
I want to tell you, I think it's the one back by the shops. That one that runs.
At the lower level?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I might be incorrect. I can check and let you know.
But it is correct that periodically, we have a roofing consultant review the roofs and make sure that we are on target for that replacement.
Any other questions? All right.
What you've seen are some costs, and again, we aren't making them public or anything yet, but you do know that you have the right to borrow up to an under $1 million without going to referendum. The borrowing that we've had in the past, those have been paid off or will be paid off in March. This is a project that you could move forward on, some of these, and then the other part of the funding you could, I mean, in all essence, you've been adding your fund balance for rainy days like this. This could be something that you could use that on. Mr. Brewer is here next to speak to that, but is there any other questions for Mr. Douglas?
I think, yeah. The only thing I've got maybe more is a comment. You know, I know that this area back here, and even kind of around this corner, it's definitely not lit very well. And I think, you know, as long as we include that in the plan.
This did have lighting assumed in there, in the canopy, yep. That's a good point.
Thank you, Greg. And Brian is here to speak to these projects, and then to speak, secondly, I think secondly is how you're going to do it, to speak to the middle school borrowing, and as a opportunity where you could save some money there.
Good evening. Booklet is coming around, and in order to step through your current debt profile such that we can discuss other debt opportunities, I started with your, on page two, your detailed outstanding indebtedness. So the first page summarizes the referendum-approved debt schedules, and that's what the designation Fund 39 is at the top of each of those. And the first issue was paid off earlier this year, and then, so issue number two and three represent the debt issues from 2008 and 2009 related to the middle school referendum. And if you recall, for those of you that were on the board at that time, that is when the interest rates began to come back down out of the financial crisis at mid to late 2008. And you can see the difference in the rates as you look down the column for the 2008 issue, ranging from a 4.2% to a 4.85%. And then if you look over at 2009, that same maturity range, the interest rates range from a 3.5% to a 4.25%. So at the time, that was very favorable. It was well below the referendum estimates and maximized the borrowing timing for the repayment of the costs related to the middle school referendum. If you flip to page three, the two issues that you see there, number four and number five, are related to the elementary referendum that you implemented in 12 and 13. And as you look down the interest rate columns for those two issues, you will see that interest rates basically hit their lows, and I have a graphical view of that in the next page. But the majority of the debt for both of those issues, at the end of 12 and then the beginning of 13, the interest rates are about 2%, ranging as high as 2.5%. So very, very favorable on a historical perspective of when to finance the new construction at prospect. So on the far right of page three, you see your annual referendum-approved debt levies. The calendar year total is the amount that gets added to the revenue limit calculation each October, late October, when you're certifying the levies. And, you know, as was the plan, the goal was to level out those payments over time, such that you have some stability of those payments as you move through the years. Any questions on those two pages? Okay. So if you look at page four, this issue represents your only debt issue outstanding inside the revenue limit. So this is termed Fund 38 debt. And this represents a refinancing of a prior service liability. If you recall, for those of you that were on the board at the time, you were paying a higher rate of interest to the retirement system for a liability. You took advantage of the low-interest rate environment in 2011 and significantly reduced the interest cost related to that liability. So those payments are scheduled to continue through 2019. And that far-right two columns, the fiscal year and the calendar year total, are the amounts that Bob builds into your annual budget that you will, you know, you approve each year. So when we discuss the potential for financing additional projects with up to that $1 million exemption, it would be this debt fund, Fund 38, that we'd be working the payments around to try and minimize the impact on the budget. Any questions on that page? Okay. So if you look at page five, this is a chart that I believe many of you have seen through the years, but it's a 30-year trend of municipal bond interest rates. And as you can tell, interest rates have began to set new lows in that 2008 and 2009 time period, and then, as I mentioned earlier, set the historical lows or generational lows at the end of 2012 and beginning of 2013. Throughout much of '13, interest rates went higher, to the point it began to change tide in January of this year. And if you look at the far right of each of those lines, representing a five-year, a 10-year, and a 20-year rate, interest rates have pretty steadily improved during 2014, which is presenting an opportunity to access low-interest cost of financing yet again. Any questions on that page? So on page six, this is an illustration of a $1 million borrowing within the revenue limit, using the board's authorization. And as I mentioned earlier, you have five more payments on the existing Fund 38 debt, which is the left column of numbers. The final payment in that is 2019. So inside the box, I've shown an example of a $1 million financing, where you begin the majority of the principal payments as the prior payments have been paid in full, with the goal being on the far right to try and minimize the increase over the current planned budget amount related to Fund 38 debt.
So budget neutral?
Well, budget neutral to the extent that currently in the '13-'14 budget, and again, in the '14-'15, you're at about 188. You would step up during those three years that I have boxed there. Those would be the most difficult years. And then it would step back down in 2019 through '24. So it's not technically budget neutral, but it's trying to minimize the impact on the budget during those years.
Yeah, but that increase is going to happen whether we do the $1 million or not, right?
Correct. Because currently, you budget to the revenue limit, so yes.
Yeah. We're adding the million on after the five years, right?
Correct.
So the 2.42 is just a guess at this point, or what?
That's actually current market interest rates with some assumed costs of accessing the market, and so it's kind of an all-in rate for financing for 10 years, with this structure, paying the principal back, starting in 2020 through '24.
That's just for Fund 38, right?
This is just Fund 38, correct.
Put the million down here. This is going to go up regardless.
Any other questions on that? That would relate to the project scope that you were reviewing under Greg's agenda item earlier. So it shows how you could potentially finance up to a million within the revenue limit, working with the existing payments that you currently have in the budget.
So, Mr. Brewer, if we made a decision at our November meeting, is that the assumption that you've used to make these projections? That you'd be in a position to sell the bonds or to borrow the money in early December?
Correct. It would actually be approval at your November, or potentially as early as your October 27th meeting. But it does have the December 3rd date on there, it says date-to-date. That would assume a closing date of that financing in early December.
The only thing we would be refinancing is Fund 38.
This isn't refinancing in this case. This is financing the new.
Financing what we're going to borrow for the $1 million project.
Correct. This, right now, is just the million of potential new projects.
And the interest rate will be, right now, 2.42?
So then, inherent in that question, the next page, is an example of, as I walk through your remaining debt issues relative to the middle school and the elementary projects, the one that is most eligible for refinancing was the 2008 debt, the first issuance of the middle school debt. And on the left side of the page, this shows the remaining payments on that debt issue. And the ones that are highlighted in yellow, the maturities that are highlighted in yellow with the interest rates from a 4.2% to a 4.85%, those you could potentially take action as early as the, you know, that November meeting, to lock in current rates, fund an escrow account, which then will pay the interest until the call date on March 1 of 2018. And then at that point, those prior bonds would be paid in full. Your new rates would be locked as of that action in late October, early November. Currently, the estimate for that is a 2.6%. And by changing the old rates from what are roughly a 4.7% average, weighted average, to a 2.6%, that is what generates the far-right column of annual savings, of approximately $25,000 to $26,000. In aggregate, during that repayment period out until 2028, it would be approximately $343,000 reduction to the tax levy related to the referendum payments. And then when we look at that as a present value in today's dollars, it's about $283,000, or 5.6% of the amount that you would be refinancing. To put that in some perspective, when I first showed this to Bob, as I showed you on that chart, rates were coming down throughout the year, I showed Bob an example of this, and rates were about 2.9 at that point. It saved about $140,000 on a present value basis. We then put it on an August Finance Committee meeting to share that information, and during that time period, rates had gone back up a little bit. So that present value savings had gone down to about $80,000 at that point. Then I met again in September with Bob and Dean prepping for this conversation, and that savings had increased to about $220,000. And then prepping for this meeting tonight, because rates have continued to move in the right direction for this type of an action, currently, the estimate is about $283,000. Obviously, rates will continue to change by the time, you know, we would get, if you said, "Let's put the district in position to lock in rates, sell new bonds into the market to refinance the old," Bob and I would have some work to do to get a prospectus together to get that moving. But as we stand here tonight, the current estimate is the present value of $283,000, or 5.6%.
And we can only pull that trigger once?
Correct. Between now and 2018, you have an option to refinance those prior 2008 bonds, correct.
And so what we talked about when he met with us after the Finance Committee, because I think, Steve, you had brought some of these questions up, was, is it possible to just pass a resolution that says, at a certain point, 2-point-something percentage, X amount of dollars, you just give him the right to pull the trigger? So if you would say here tonight, or probably this is one we would have to pass on the 27th, is that we want to see at least a savings of 300, I'm just pulling out of my head, $300,000 on this bond, and whenever that magic number comes up, they do the paperwork and get it done. We can do that. You don't have to wait to a specific date and then try to call a special meeting and get it done. So I think what he's trying to do in this example is to show you how different it was from one meeting to the next meeting to the next meeting, but then is to also show you is, if we, and I trust the man, he's done well for us through the years, and so has his company, that we say, at a certain point, we're giving you the right to do this for us to save money for the taxpayers over the next, is it 12 years, or?
2028, so 13.
13 years. So you're looking at saving $283,000 over 14 years.
$283,000.
$283,000, yeah.
Don't forget the thousand part.
Yeah. Which is, you remember, when we did this way back, and we set them from the time of the referendum, where we set it, we saved almost $2 million. Here's another chance at another quarter of a million. So, I mean, if you're interested in... So I mean, if you're interested in that, Bob has to, there's a resolution that we have to get together, and he could, we could pass that at our October 27th meeting, which then gives him the right to, you know, go to market for us.
And in effect, the resolution delegates the final sign-off to the President and Clerk. So it basically gives you the daily flexibility between the meetings, so that, you know, if we can get the paperwork done ahead of that, let's say, the November meeting, we can bring that back to the President and Clerk and say, here was the parameter set by the Board on October 27th, we wanted no less than X percent savings, we are now at X-plus, do we want to go ahead and lock in these rates and move forward with the financing?
And in the same situation for the million-dollar one?
If you would like to do that, the benefit of putting those two together is sharing some of the cost of issuance, the legal costs, the prospectus costs, so, but that's really, you know, does that, does that fit with your decision-making process?
What's the time-specific, Greg, that we have to, that we should have something passed so the bids can be let and all that?
Yeah, I would say November's probably a good time to December. We'd have to get the design done and get the material ordered, because we'd be doing all the work over the summer, get everything ordered.
So November meeting would be the last time.
I certainly don't see any reason not to refinance, I mean, there is no downside.
I mean, as we discussed in Finance, the only real downside is, you know, if rates continue to go lower for, and we get closer and closer to 2018, you could have more savings.
We could have saved more.
Correct.
Or less.
Yeah, I just want to be clear that that is a potential downside for locking in.
Any lower will multiply by zero, so it doesn't do us any good. With the, I guess the question I would have is, you know, when we met in August, it had gone up again, and since then, you know, the markets have kind of come back up, and now we're in a correction again going down. Do you see a correlation between the market and the finance markets? Stock market totally?
Stock market's all over the place right now, the global economy, you know, it does all factor in. I think supply and demand, as we discussed in August, that's another factor for why in 2014, we've seen that steady grind to lower interest rates, because all the signs by the action of the Federal Reserve Board, the economic data points that we get month after month, it all points to rates should be higher than where they currently are. So yes, it's very sensitive, you know, when you're setting that target that would direct the President and Clerk, you know, what savings to go with, keep that in mind, that, you know, the difference in .3%, you know, was from $82,000 to $282,000, so it doesn't take a lot for that to continue to change.
So we should try and have that done.
Yeah, and I would suggest combining, right? I would suggest combining the two.
What two?
The million dollars and the other one. And save on, yeah, we can.
You have the ability to do that, if, you know, so the benefit would be that, you know, you're sharing the same resolutions, you're sharing the same rating, the same official statement, you know, so the process, that would make the million a little bit more cost-effective by putting, by doing them together at the same time.
Yeah, but they're still two separate.
They're still two separate, absolutely.
Issuances, you're just processing them together.
Correct, the Fund 39 and then the Fund 38, but in terms of accessing the market, you're able to share the credit rating costs, and, you know, some of the legal is streamlined, so.
And that seems to make sense, too. We can save money, that's always good, I think. Any other questions?
My only question would be, Brian, can we have that ready by our October 27th? And I guess the big thing would be if you're ready to go to the million one, because that's really never been discussed. I mean, the refinancing one, I think Steve, you've had the opportunity at Finance to discuss that, we've talked about it a little bit last month, and that one just really is a no-brainer. The other one is, are you ready to, are you willing and ready to do some work on this facility?
What is the total for the two projects that you talked about, Greg? Do we have a total for the?
Be under a million dollars.
Is it more than the million?
It is, so if you add up all the pieces, it's kind of a menu, I think the numbers across the top are about 1.4, and then there's the two projects at the bottom, is about 250 for the two at the bottom, and then the second sheet is another 350.
But wasn't the 350,000, that other thing was, you talked about the fund balance for that, because all we can borrow is the million.
Right, well, 9999, whatever. But if you wanted to do all the projects, then the rest would come from the fund balance.
Then we'd have to talk about going to the fund, that's a different fund.
Yes.
I'm kind of curious as to how these became the priorities, we never got a report on that, as opposed, because I'm sitting at home with another little stack of papers that talk about athletic facilities and other things that have come up, so how did they, how did it get figured that this was it?
Actually, those are all included in our long-range plan.
Okay, and we've discussed that recently.
We discussed that a year ago.
I gotta get that out.
Correct, those are all identified in the long-range plan.
Were those athletic things in there, too, Bob?
No, that was, no, that was something that was just a recent, and that, we haven't really had a discussion about that.
And if you looked at that, I think the long-range plan, the athletic fields would be on there somewhere around 2016, 2017, but I know that you and Steve had asked us to look, and so we have been beginning to do that, so.
Yeah.
But it was down the, down the years for those.
When we said us look, that means the Facilities Committee, right?
Yes.
But there's no reason why.
I gotta get the long-range plan, I'll just see how these come up.
I think it was last August.
Do you, August?
But there's no reason why we can't go through the exercise of getting the funds acquired, and then argue about what we want to spend, because I think we need to lock in the rate.
Yeah.
I can send you a coffee, too, if you'd like.
Or decide which ones you want to do and not do.
That's a nice way of saying, yeah.
Just tonight.
So that's not in there anyway?
Any other questions? Do you have anything else?
So the only other question I would add for you, when I talked to Corals and Brady about the resolution to bring back to you, they're going to have a blank in there for the savings, and generally, it's in the form of that 5.6% of what you're refinancing, so they talk about it in present value, so it's going to say something to the effect of, you know, whereas no less than X percent of the amount being refunded. So at some point, either we can leave that blank and you fill it in by action that night, or you can tell us to pre-populate it with a percentage, and, you know, it will be in there for your consideration that night.
I understand that, Brian, and I know that's difficult, because you want to say, we want to make the most savings that we can. Is there a way that you can put together a prospectus to say, if you set it here, this would be at the current rate what you would save, so they can, and then we can put that together with the Corals and Brady, so that we all have an idea of what that means? I mean, I know we have what you have here tonight, but you had three examples, and we've only given them one.
Right, yeah, I can give kind of a summary of, if it's 2%, here's what it is, if it's 3%, here's what it is, if it's 4%, so that you can have a range, and we can create a sensitivity table, which is what we shared with the Finance Committee about how, you know, it doesn't take very much for those rates to change that savings level, so I can certainly pull that together for your use that night.
And then this one, would you have it dated, like, just for 2014, so we can see it on a smaller scale?
Sure, I can do that, yes.
I think when we set the percent to, we need to set it at a rate that it's worth the administrative costs, that we're going to save enough to cover the administrative costs.
And that's a great point, that was one of the questions Steve had asked at the Finance Committee, the savings here are net of all of the cost to access the market, so when you're looking at these savings, this is the net savings to the district.
So is that a clear enough direction, you know, which way we're going?
As a, just a procedural, you had asked, entering your report for October 23rd, if that worked for schedules, would you want to try and have this material for Finance to have seen before the 27th?
I think that would be smart, if we can meet that schedule.
I think, I think you can, yes.
All right, thank you both for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Effective educator update?
In your packets, I put a new diagram that has just come out, as you know, this year is the first year of administrators being evaluated on the effective educator professional model, so teachers have had it in the past, educational specialists, and now it's administrators. Probably next year will be central office, which I believe is in the green, and then the superintendent one, which is, I don't know, lilac or whatever color it is. That one, you'll have to make a decision on down the road as to when that instrument is developed, as to whether you want to do that. We saw a sample at our CISA meeting here a couple of weeks back, and all of, all the whole thing discussed was curricular issues, not, nothing with, I think, Rick, you made the comment, was, there were no standards for finance, or for, you know, anything outside of curricular issues. But just so you know, I'm going through the training so that I can, we can do the area in red this year, we have began that, the SLOs, the administrators are beginning to write theirs, and we will move forward with that this year. But I wanted you to, I thought this was a nice way of setting up, and also a very nice way of saying what each one contains, so that you could have that as we move forward. The next thing I put in your packet was my goals for this year, you can talk about those, or talk about those under the closed session one, or if you change your goals later on tonight, or how they're written, I will gladly change mine to read that way. It seems like as our numbers get changing, that I'm here always discussing different personnel and things, I'm a little concerned with the secretarial structure of the middle school, in that, in that there is one full-time person there, and one person who comes down for a couple hours of the day to work with that person, and then goes back and works on district office materials. I sent you home a breakdown of her duties, and the duties of that, of that district office position, from where it was when we set that up, probably three years ago, to where it is today. One of the largest time consumers in this was, in the old days, open enrollment only went from February to August, or April, and today it's 24/7. We will process at least two open enrollment forms a week, in and out. Free and reduced does the same thing, it fluctuates all the way through, so, I'll be honest, both of the secretaries probably don't charge us the overtime that they probably put in, but the concern came to me one day when I had the district lady off doing a report for us, and the other person was gone that day, and we had a sub in there, and I was there when a young person came down to get their medication, and it was like, all right, not all the subs have been trained on this. Where's the, where's the forms, where's this, where's that? And it hit me that we have two people at the elementary school for 545 students, we have three people, one being guidance and athletics up here, for 410 students, and we have one person for 425. I think we've got, because we're going to need to move the other person strictly back to district secretary with all the things that are going on, I'm wondering if we don't have a liability just waiting to happen. And so I guess what I'm asking is that, I mean, we expanded the custodial staffs, which made them, me really review the secretarial, and that's why I say I spent time over that one day when there was a sub there. I think we need to get someone else trained, working two people at that desk, I mean, for any of you that ever come in there during the morning or at night, you know how busy it is, if one, if the lady who's there now has to get up and move, there's nobody at that desk. So I guess, I'm putting that out there as, this wasn't something that came from Ms. Nicholson or anybody else, it just came after I watched that happen that one day, and thought to myself, this is the liability and an accident waiting to happen. And so I guess I'm asking if we can move forward, at least in interviewing, this would be a 10-month contract, like our second secretaries are in the other buildings, but I really would like to move forward and get somebody on hand. I just think with all the children that are in those two buildings, and the middle school's going to grow for a couple of years, in a year or so, it's going to get bigger.
Now you're like 450?
Four, it's four, 430-something, 438, 440, but in a couple of years, it'll be 450, 454 for a couple of years. That's an awful lot of students for one person.
I'm a little concerned about the present secretary working overtime, and especially not getting paid for it.
Well, and we tell her to put it down, she just, you know how that goes. I can say they are, and they'll tell me they're not, but I, if you just read what's on there, they have to be doing it, getting everything done, they're getting everything done, but in fairness to them, I think we need to get them some help.
Any questions? Do we have a?
Well, I don't have an objection to moving forward with an interview process, but I would like this, the cost element of that to be a part of the budget discussion that we're going to have on the 27th, because certainly that budget didn't reflect this position.
No.
Did it reflect that our enrollment is changing?
No, you're right.
Like that either.
Right.
And we didn't get, but I'm sure there's somewhere that tells the grade-by-grade enrollments and their changes from last year to this year, and that would give us some idea of what's happening in the future, you know, how, because I think from what we received in the email from Amanda, the elementary enrollment went down a little bit. Well, those little bit down are going to ripple to the middle school and then to the high school, so until you see the big picture, you don't even have a way to project.
I have that, I'll pass it out to you.
Enrollments are money, I mean, that's where the money comes from.
I did look at that down a little bit, off of what Dean has, the enrollment at the middle, at the elementary school, basically the 5K being down, and the 4K being downfalls, five months, or five years and nine months to the economic crash, so, however, like, you'll get that pink report that we had.
It actually went up this year.
We were up by four, but we predicted we were going to be up by 12, so.
At $9,000 a kid?
Correct.
Is that what it is about?
No, but it's on a three-year rolling average, so it's not $9,000 a kid.
Yeah, it's in the, okay. But it's 333, but when it gets to FTEs, every FTE counts for what?
I think in the statistics, about 10 grand.
So 12, you're down how many? 12?
We're up four.
We're up four?
We're up four from last year.
Predicted to be up 12.
The guess was 12, but you're still up.
Now, the drop in the 5K was significant over last year, but again, that 5K group, that's the depression group, or the recession, the Great Recession group.
Right.
Okay, that's five years and nine months to the day.
Right, will it ripple, that's what will ripple through the system.
It may, but based on the fact that they were down 13, we still added 21 to all the other groups, so if you look at all of the groups diagonally, you can see that year-over-year, the classes are actually increasing, and we've got that drop-off between, you know, the 2008, 2009 birth rate group, so the question...
We'll know what the revenue impact is on the 27th, when we get the report.
Right, and that's why I'm not saying, let's just do it before that happens. One of the things that I found interesting going with this, is I went back on that sheet that I just gave you, and looked at the increase from eighth grade to ninth grade, thinking, all right, what's happening from the middle school coming to the high school? Since 2010, after the middle school is built, and costs for... Since 2010, after the middle school is built and costs for other schools has went up, the average for ours in enrollment growth here is 12.57 students.
Correct, and I think...
Per year, per class.
Most of those was St. Paul's. Normally, our St. Paul's transition was six to eight students.
Well, it used to be three to four when I came. It's now 10 to 12. Two years ago, we added 17 students in that class. This year, we added 11. And then that works out into, and I've got some other figures that the finance, or the facilities committee is going to look at as we look at this building, but, you know, if you take those large groups and then add on 11 students a year for four years, this high school has the potential of being at 470, again where it used to be. So, yeah, you might see a blip down right now because of the 5K. Both the childcare people in town tell me the largest third grade, three-year-old class they've had in years. So that's why I can ask for, let's give me a yes, but we'd really like to go out and look and see what's there and then see if we can work it into the budget.
So you're not going to interview, you're just going to work to see if it works in the budget?
Well, I think we're going to put it out there so we can get, if, if it works in,
it'll work in.
We can get people to do it. What's that?
I said, I think it'll work in. I mean, if you interview people, you kind of think you're...
Well, I won't interview until after the meeting.
Okay.
But I want to put it out there so people have time to get their materials to us.
I think if you can justify it in the budget, then you need it.
Well, especially with all the overtime we're already paying.
Yeah, I agree with you, Rick. When you start paying overtime, then...
So lead, lead schools.
The next one, you got a resolution in your packet. It's not something for tonight. This was asked by Teresa Layman if you would pass this. This, I think, would help with the lead points, that saying down the line, if you ever were building another building, you would try to do it in a lead fashion. If you're willing to look at that, I would bring that in in November, and I think it probably would help with the lead points or scoring down the line. The other thing is I put in, is remember last month, you upped the subpay teacher rate, and I told you that it would come back, that the pairs would ask for the same thing, and that has happened. I have not had time to survey the area schools to see what they pay. I will do that. We will see where budgetarily we stand and what happens. But I just thought you should be aware that it was brought back. Three other things that came up today. One is we have a group of students in town that would like to start a bowling team. Now, there is no WIA bowling sport, there is no equestrian sport, but we have an equestrian club. And what they're looking to do is to see if they could, could follow what softball did, what equestrian club did, and see if they could begin a bowling club. We have told them at this right now, I know they already have a group of students, Eli, you might be able to help me with knowing kids that are doing, and I don't...
I know that it's, it's been like in the announcements at school. I don't know anything more than that.
You don't have a clue on how many or anything? I didn't hear. But what I've asked them to do is come with numbers to see if it's sustainable and do what we did with the equestrian club. I think all they're looking for is in the long run, can they wear the Elcat logo and can they get a letter, which the equestrian club does. So does the dance team, so does, you know, some of these other things. Next thing, I, I got an email today from, forwarded to me from Mr. Murphy. There is a establishment eatery in Lodi that wants to start a capital conference room and in which they would put jerseys from all of the schools in the capital conference on their walls. Now, when I mean eatery, this is also a tavern slash eatery. I struggle with giving them a Lake Mills jersey to put on the wall, even though it might be a back room or a side room or whatever, but I thought I would rather ask you and see what your thoughts are on that. I have not responded to the place in Lodi yet as to whether we will do it or not. So I guess I'm looking for some feedback as to, do you think this is where one of our jerseys ought to be hanging?
I would prefer to think about this and talk about it in November.
And again, it just came across my desk today. The other one that came across my desk today came from the city of Lake Mills. I forwarded that to you, is that they are putting in some crossing lights at the, at the middle school to cross, is it B that goes out there? And in doing so, they will change the curb coming off of College Street. So when you come past the middle school and go up to B, the curb will not go like this anymore, it will go like this. So it straightens out so that you can see better, and then there will be a, their overhead lights that would go in there. For anybody who's walking can go up and punch the lights so they come on, not just during school hours. This was a resolution that was taken to the city council by a group of our middle schoolers, and they thought it was a good idea and passed it. I found out about it today.
When do they plan to do the work, Dean?
I would think starting tomorrow. I don't know, Donna, but if they want it done before winter.
Okay.
So...
It's just that we, they have a way of starting work right when we're going to start school or something event.
Yeah. Hopefully, it's now when we're in the routine. So with that, I, I am finished, sir.
Oh, good. All right. Mr. Primmer, usually it doesn't go this long till you get a chance to speak. So welcome aboard. And Phyllis, and what's going on in the high school?
So recently, it was homecoming week. The seniors won the Spirit Award, and we had a lot of participation in like the dress-up days and the decorating activities and, at the parade. And to top that off, 312 students attended the dance. As far as the music program goes, the annual fruit sale started today. If anyone wants to buy fruit, contact me after the meeting. Orchestra has a concert next Monday at 7:30, and The Wedding Singer, which is the musical, is coming out soon. The box office is going to open up November 3rd, and 100-plus students are involved with that. We're, we're planning some trips for the coming year. That has to do with going to New York for show choir. Recently, they took, the Spanish, French, and business students took a trip to Chicago, and 53 students attended that. And fine arts weekend happened at the American Players Theater where a bunch of English students went to watch plays. For sports, soccer is their first regional game tomorrow. Tennis, they were the conference champions, which was a cool thing. The cross-country team is doing well with the young team. Recently, the football team beat Luther Prep at the homecoming game, and recently volleyball beat Luther Prep three games to zero.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Board Gores review. In your packet, you had the three board goals that we have been using in the last couple of years. Facilities, financial responsibility, and student achievement. And I guess my recommendation at this point is, all of those are still pertinent right now, and I would suggest that we keep those pending the strategic planning, which may result in, in new goals. For the board?
I, I still have a question about number two, just the wording of explore ways to reduce the expenditures. For people that are exploring ways to reduce expenditures, we've been doing a lot of spending. I just think that we, that the wording should say that we will then not reduce the expenditures, but spend them in the most prudent ways, or that the, the most effective or efficient ways. Not necessarily to reduce it, but to just, that we'll spend, that we'll spend the money wisely. I guess that's what I'm saying.
And that's what the first part says, to ensure financial responsibility.
But not necessarily, we're not necessarily exploring ways to reduce expenditures. We're looking, we're just looking for ways to spend them in the best interests of students.
Okay, so you want to add to it what?
I just want to take that off, and I don't care if you add some other words there or just ensure financial responsibility.
I don't know that I would, I would add something to it. I don't know that I would take it off, because if you think about what we did with the, the HVAC system at either the middle school or the elementary school, where we found a more efficient way to heat the building, so we're saving $135,000 year over year, so we're spending it more efficiently, or we looked for other technology to help us reduce that cost. So I think that needs to be a part of it.
I don't think we've reduced any expenditures. I think we've spent the money more wisely. That may lead to that, but...
Yeah, I mean, we put in a 20-year system, pays back in four years.
People say we're trying to reduce the expenditures. Well, we, we're adding a secretary, we've added this, we've added that, and we...
We've reduced the heating and cooling in middle school by $80,000 the first year.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and the elementary is scheduled to be 135,000. That's reducing expenditures.
And then...
And shifting it maybe to something else, but...
Spreading and adding something.
Well, and after four years, now we can use that 135 for other things, you know, like...
But if you use it for other things, you're not reducing it, you're just reassigning it or reallocating it to another place.
Well, we reduced it and then reassigned.
It's okay. You know, I don't, I just don't think that that's what we're doing, but I'm just one person here.
Well, you could say that we are exploring ways to reduce expenditures where practical. Because I agree, you, you could look at that and say that our, our goal is to reduce expenditures. Well, it's really not. It's, it's balancing what we have and trying to use it wisely, I guess.
That's right. That's all I'm saying.
All right.
Which in essence is the first part, to ensure financial responsibilities.
All right. Want to interrupt?
Well, I was thinking too about teacher retention. I mean, if we're not at this point, point adding to them, but I think that would be an important goal as well, and to explore that a little bit more carefully.
Mm-hmm. It could be. I don't, right now, I guess I'm, I'm inclined to keep these three and then add maybe something or change them for next year, is what I'm thinking. I don't know.
Sorry, you're thinking on Gores tool, just say to ensure financial responsibility, period? I mean, if you want to talk about reducing expenditures, you just spent how many minutes talking about how you can reduce your, your bond rates over the next 20 years?
Right. To spend it on other things, that we need more, maybe.
Well, we didn't say that, but it probably all comes in.
But in essence, that's what it is. We aren't necessarily, if we reduce it, gonna give it back. You know, we have other projects here that could use that money.
I don't, it's, they're your goals, you have to tell me.
Ensure financial responsibility, period?
That's, I mean, in essence, that's what it's all, what we're doing.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
It could be reducing money, it could be adding money, it could be...
And again, these could all change. When, when you come out of strategic planning, you might have all new goals.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
I hope that student achievement isn't lost.
All right, the next one is the policy committee. We looked at these policies and like three, or let me see, two, three out of the four are required by law, and we had to update course options program. Basically, that allows a student to take courses at another school, up to two per semester. And that's what that one deals with, and the applications is the, the second policy. The third one is school rank, and the fourth one is pretty interesting. Again, it's, it's required by law, and we're just updating this. But basically, it gives someone who did not finish high school and get a diploma, that goes to service in the, in, in a war zone, and it, it allows us to give them the diploma in kind of after the, the, after the case or after the service. So those are the, those are the four that we discussed, and, and this is pretty much the first reading of them.
I, I do have a question on the youth, on the course options. Is that the youth options?
Nope, it's all different.
It's different.
You now have open enrollment, you have youth options, course options.
And it doesn't matter if you offer the course or not, they can go to somewhere else.
Does not matter. Doesn't matter if they go to a private school, public school, or the home school.
In fact, we have one student?
One student who is doing that already.
Isn't that interesting?
Yeah, it's all by law.
And the veterans diploma, I think we're going to...
I already have.
Talk to the Legion to see if there's anybody that, especially World War II, Vietnam...
Yeah, or Korea. There might be some, yes.
Korea, Vietnam, maybe. And now they have to have a high school diploma to actually enter the military, so it doesn't pertain to anybody today necessarily, but...
But it's looking back to those people who were, you know, second son of the farm, the oldest one had to stay, the second one got drafted, didn't finish high school, and then when they came back, had to go to work, so...
Have you had any requests?
I have never had one here. I have in other districts.
I have too.
But again, I did sit down with the Legion president and go through this, and he was going to take it back to his meetings to see if there was anybody or if anybody knew somebody that this fit.
Have you seen these pictures going out on Walgreens on the wall there of our community veterans being done by our elementary art teacher?
Mm-hmm. It's on Aurora on that Walgreens.
Well, I mean Aurora.
Chaco or whatever.
Downtown?
Yeah.
Nice.
Yep.
Correspondents?
I have two this month.
All right.
During a time like this, we realize how much our friends and relatives really mean to us. Your expression of sympathies will always, our sympathy will always be remembered. Family of Patrice Foote. And, thank you for the weeping fig. Your kindness is much appreciated. Thanks again, Mary Mess. The family of Diane Spangler.
Action items.
First one you have on here is a request from the softball team to take, oh, no, my first one on there is we have a short-term borrowing resolution, and I can turn that over to Mr. Chady, and he can go through that.
The resolution before you is to authorize the borrowing of an amount not to exceed Last year's amount was lower than that because we were up against the $10 million annual borrowing. This takes us back to where the district was the two prior years prior to last year.
Okay, can we have a motion?
I move the board approve the following, be it resolved by the school board of the Lake Mills Area School District, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, that authorization be granted under section 67.12, Pren 8, Pren 9A1 of the Wisconsin statutes, the temporary borrowing in the amount not to exceed $1,750,000 to meet the immediate expenses of operating and maintaining the public instruction in the district during the current school year.
Second.
The board is second to approve the short-term borrowing. Any questions?
I assume, Mr. Chady, that this is a cash flow question and that, that we are assured that 1.75 is going to be coming our way sometime.
Exactly. Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Hi.
Reverend Imperial.
Hi.
Donna Thomas.
Steve Topol.
Hi.
Richard Mason.
Hi, and that passes unanimously. Approval of softball trip.
The softball team would like to take a trip to Disney Wide World of Sports in the spring break of 2016. They have a huge complex where they have teams from around the country that come and play. But again, because it's an overnight and any of that type of thing, you have to approve it, and being that it is an out-of-state event, once you approve it, then it must be approved by the WIA. You know, softball's not been around that long, they talked about it. They wanted to try to do this for this year, but I told them, you know, you really haven't gotten that one-year approval from the board, so they're going to play in a tournament in the Dells this year, which is new, and then they're asking to do this, which also gives them time to raise funds to do so.
I move the board approve the girls softball trip to...
I move the board approve the girls softball trip to Disney Wide World of Sports during spring break of two sixteen, two thousand and sixteen. It's understood that the board will incur no cost and will accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason.
Second.
I'm going to second to approve the softball trip. Any questions?
What's this, what's this one-year board?
We have a, on our policy, it says they're supposed to request at least a year ahead of time. And most of your trips, that's why they're always, like the Spanish trip was for 2016. That's why most of them do that. Some of them don't always know, but we try really hard to make sure they do. If you go back, if, if it's not a year ahead, it's an exception.
And the reason.
I think it's so that the parents, parents know so that they can plan. And then also is that you can plan, all right, spring break of 2016. The music people know now, you don't, you don't take a trip that year. It's our year. It's more for planning. So the students are also caught between, do I go here? Do I go there? And can I raise funds for both? And it's more for planning.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Reverend Imperial.
Hi.
Donna Thomas.
Hi.
Steve Topol.
Hi.
Don Delaney.
Hi.
Richard Mason.
Hi, that's approved unanimously. Approval of eighth-grade trip to Washington, DC.
Again, this one is right on the fringe, Steve, of the year, but this is the one that you just approved a year ago. The first trip was this last summer to the middle school students going to Washington, DC. I have had many students and parents who've talked to me about the success of it. And so they would like to repeat the trip.
I move the board approve the Washington, DC, science trip for June of 2015. It's understood that the board will incur no cost. Will accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason.
Second.
I'm going to second to approve the eighth-grade trip to Washington, DC. Questions on that one? Comments? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas.
Hi.
Steve Topol.
Hi.
Don Delaney.
Hi.
Reverend Imperial.
Hi.
Richard Mason.
Hi, and that passes unanimously. Approval of strategic planning initiative.
I could have probably put D and E together, but I wasn't sure how you wanted to do it. So if you do it in one motion, I'm going to understand. The reason I split it into two was, one, you needed to say, yes, you wanted to do it. And you wanted to do both phases. And then the second one, then you do a contract for the dollar amount with the, the consulting firm. Please remember that Mr. Dr. Mason has met with that, the consulting firm. I think we discussed this the last couple of months. If you approve this tonight, then I can start getting things out. I do have, I have talked with the staff and I have a group of them who'd like to, or some of them would like to be involved in both phases. The only other thing that I think you as a board need to agree to is whether or not you as a board want to be part of it, or if you want to wait for the report in the end.
I have a request. I have one board member to participate in the strategic planning. I don't know if the rest of you want to be involved or not. Some districts, they are, and other districts, they aren't.
Let me ask this one. When, if the board were not involved, board members were not involved in the strategic planning, and a plan came forward, would that be coming forward as a draft with, given the boards an opportunity to make changes?
Or, and I think even if a board member is on there, it is a draft to you. It is a committee who is handing you a proposal, let's put it that way. You have the right to change, accept, or say, no, thank you for doing the work. Gives us a lot of ideas, but we're just not going to incorporate this. So the final say is always at this table with something like that.
That would be true of any policy or anything too.
Same thing. Yes.
Same as key benefits.
So, yeah, so what is, what's the pleasure of the board? Do they want to be part of this or not? I, you know, I, I can go either way. I guess I'm inclined to myself not be involved in it.
It would seem if an individual member wished to be involved, that would be great. If not, that would be great too.
Just as long as three of you don't say you want to sit on phase one and then everything becomes a board meeting.
We have to have a board meeting.
But if you're interested, let me know.
I wrote, I wrote a request to Rick.
All right.
I was interested in doing.
Do you want to just forward it to me so I have it?
Yeah.
Or Rick can do it. One of you?
I think I have it.
Thank you.
Okay. So let's take the first motion.
How about if I move the board approve the district to enter strategic planning with the assistance of Joe Schroeder Consulting Firm? The strategic planning will occur during the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school year. It include both phases of the firm's proposal. I further indicate that the board approve a contract with Joe Schroeder Consulting Firm at a cost of three thousand eight hundred dollars plus mileage.
Second.
I'm going to second to enter into the, with the consulting firm, enter into a contract with them and for the amount of three eight hundred dollars. And that will take an entire year, beginning as soon as they can begin.
Well, I, I think if you see on that one sheet, there's dates already set for phase one and phase two.
So.
It didn't look like it took that long. Remember, they did the Beaver Dam. Didn't you bring us the Beaver Dam?
The Beaver Dam one was much longer.
Yeah.
Then that paper didn't reflect it that you gave us.
He only gave you the first sheet.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Now, discussion?
It appears as though it runs November through March.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Someone else?
Okay, roll call, please.
Steve Topol.
Hi.
Don Delaney.
Hi.
Reverend Imperial.
Hi.
Donna Thomas.
Hi.
Richard Mason.
Hi, and that passes unanimously. Approval of contract with key benefits.
Again, you had a contract. This one ran out last year after we didn't finish with them, if you want to be. Again, you have to have a contract with them, even if you don't do anything, because by audit this year, you have to have an updated OPEB study. So it's going to cost you the seventy-eight hundred dollars to do the standard OPEB study. What they would do is to come to your October twenty-seventh meeting, go through that, go through the tiered plan that the committee had talked about, take ideas from you, take them back, and then run it under the current, yes, we've had some teachers leave. We've had some teachers retire. Then they would take the current one, rerun it, and bring it back. And then that would be the one that would be used in the audit in July. And at that point in time, then you have all the facts and figures as to, all right, how many retirees have come off the OPEB? How many do you have going on? And then again, the study of how much and what. What I put in your packet was everything they sent me, which kind of looked at some of the tiered, which, all of this information was information that the committee had from way back when. But I did, they just wanted to send it again so you had it. And if you would, if you approve this, then they will be here at seven-thirty on the twenty-seventh to go through it. Excuse me.
Can we have a motion?
I move the board approve a contract with key benefits concepts to work with the district to update the district's OPEB study and review changes in the early retirement language of the district.
Second.
I'm going to second to approve the contract with key benefits. Any questions on that? I think we really need some numbers to make some decisions here.
And I think they have some. We just didn't send them through the, I mean, they have some from the old one, which you saw.
But we need an updated one. We had a lot of changes and so on. Go from there.
Is key benefits the only group that we have an option for?
There isn't anybody else out there that does a good job with this, Steve. I've checked. I called WADA and, and.
Assuming they did a good job.
It's, they're the only ones that have the actuaries who have the software to really put this together.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Reverend Imperial.
Hi.
Donna Thomas.
Hi.
Steve Topol.
Hi.
Don Delaney.
Hi.
Richard Mason.
Hi, and that passed unanimously. We'll hear report at the twenty-seventh.
Yes, they will be here that night. I'll call them.
Good.
To make sure they're here.
Approval of professional staff resignation.
Dear Lake Mills Area School Board, Mr. Sanders, I'm writing this letter to resign my position as a teacher in the Lake Mills Area School District effective October fifth. My ten years of service within Lake Mills Area School District as a teacher in various capacities has been professionally rewarding. I thank the board and their administration for seeing my value and giving me the opportunity to join the staff in two thousand and four. My years within the district have been a time of opportunity, allowing for professional and personal growth. I celebrated with you most revered moments, my marriage and the birth of my son. I've worked in partnership with the most honest and trusting parents who opened their hearts to me and children that changed my world. I look back at my years of service to the Lake Mills Area School District with gratitude sincerely, Ms. Rebecca Stein. Ms. Stein has taken a quasi-administrative job with the Marshall District, so it didn't open until October. And again, her degrees that she has taken beyond teaching was in administration, and this is a step for her to further her career.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the resignation of Ms. Rebecca Stein from her contract for the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school year and thank her for her time and effort for the student, staff, parents, community, and school district of Lake Mills.
Second.
I'm going to second to approve the resignation of Ms. Stein. Any questions?
So will she be offered the exit interview also?
Yes, I already have sent that off to our person.
When will we get the next?
I would think by the end of the month. He talked to me last week. He's been playing phone tag back and forth with three people.
And Marshall paid the fine.
Marshall has already paid the fine.
Fine. Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas.
Hi.
Steve Topol.
Hi.
Don Delaney.
Hi.
Reverend Imperial.
Hi.
Richard Mason.
Hi, that passed unanimously. Approval of professional staff contracts.
You have two. One is the middle school, high school counselor. Again, both of these are one-year positions. That was explained to them when they met with me for Ms. Michelle Kolchuski. And the other one was Dan Zuski. And Dan would be replacing Mrs. Stein.
I move the board approve one-year professional staff contracts to Ms. Michelle Kozinski as a grade five through twelve guidance counselor and Ms., to Mr. Dan Zinski.
Zeski, I think.
Zeski as a third-grade teacher for the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school year.
Second.
Questions? Comments?
So these are both one-year?
Every contract is a one-year, but they understand that, you know, especially with the guidance, that that may, if we can look to psychologists, we will do that. So any other gentleman knows that if he does a good job, we'll talk to bringing him back, like we do any other teacher.
So this is his first really full-time teaching position?
He just graduated, yes.
The thing that I thought, you never mentioned this, but I thought was good about him was the fact that he has ESL certification.
Yes.
So is he going to be involved? I mean, this goes back to what you talked about in the report card.
He has some students in his classroom.
We have achievement gaps with our Hispanic population, and he's a ESL teacher.
Yeah, yeah, he's already kind of working with Mrs. Mullen, or I don't know with Mrs. Mullen, but he has some students in his classroom that I know he's already working with.
Do we have a lot of applications for this position?
I don't know on this one, Donna. I'd have to ask Mrs. Thompson.
Twenty-seven.
There was a number, I thought.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven was on there?
Yep.
Okay, and we interviewed, how many did it say on there, Steve?
Four.
It says it right on that thing.
I can't.
It's also at the school year.
Yeah, which, once the school year begins, the number goes way down of applicants.
So you interviewed four. And this man had two certifications, even though he didn't have any experience, he had two certifications.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Steve Topol.
Hi.
Don Delaney.
Hi.
Reverend Imperial.
Hi.
Donna Thomas.
Hi.
Richard Mason.
Hi, that, that passes unanimously. Approval of custodial staff contract.
There's a write-up in your, in your handouts when we interviewed back this summer for the other position at the elementary school. You remember, we had a part-time position. This is the person we would have offered it to, but he was not able to take a part-time job. And so when we talked to him, he is able to. I think that he will do a good job. I'm recommending that we offer that position to Ryan Peterson.
I move the board approve a total contract for Mr. Ryan Peterson for the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school year.
Second.
I'm going to second to approve the custodial contract. Questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Hi.
Reverend Imperial.
Hi.
Donna Thomas.
Hi.
Steve Topol. Richard Mason.
Hi, that passes unanimously. Approval of para-educator contract.
Well, this is a domino. You had somebody full-time who resigned back in August. We shifted somebody to that position. We had a part-time person who is also ELS certified, and we want to make full-time. And then, so we interviewed for that person's part-time one. And so we're, we're asking you to make Brenda Gonzalez full-time and to hire Sheila Riggleman on a part-time basis. I think it's three hours and three.
Three point seven five.
Three point seven hours a day. So it's not in the benefits or any of that.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve a full-time para-educator contract to Ms. Brenda Gonzalez and a part-time para-educator contract to the Ms. Sheila Riggleman for the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school year.
Second.
I'm going to second to approve her educator contract, full-time and a part-time. Any questions?
No, but here again, we got someone that speaks Spanish.
Yes.
Which helps us address again our report card.
She's there now part-time, but this will help.
Yes.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Reverend Imperial.
Hi.
Donna Thomas.
Hi.
Steve Topol.
Hi.
Don Delaney. Richard Mason.
Hi, that passes unanimously.
At this time of the year, every year, you have to.
Youth options.
Sorry. Youth options for second semester. You can see we have four students asking for classes. With the Jedi and other things, these numbers have always come down over the past few years. But as you can look, there are some tremendous courses that these people are trying to take. So I would ask that you approve those for those people.
I move the board approve the youth option request for the second semester of the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school year.
Second.
I'm going to second to approve the, the youth options. Any questions on that?
Do these courses fit into, how do they fit into our graduation requirements?
Technically, that's a dual credit. So.
So they replace existing?
No, they don't replace at all. Usually it's, they almost, they have all of the electives or the required courses. Now, there might be a social studies that might replace or a English, because they're taking something different. But they have to have all of the required courses by eleventh grade that any other student has. So, yeah, in, in some cases, it could replace. But it's because it's a class we don't offer.
Is this for just one semester?
Yes.
So one student has a whole bunch of classes. So they're not going to get into all these classes?
Well, or they may, they'll be gone most of the day, but they're not going to probably, because remember, youth options, our students are last on the list. So they may get in, they may not. But at least he's telling you that he wants to be gone that amount of, or she.
There's like thirty credits.
I think you need to think of it as a placeholder, because the other thing to keep, the other thing to keep in mind with these is that they're talking about enrollments for the fall.
No, it's for the spring.
Spring, okay, for the spring. In, in most cases, the spring course schedules have not yet been produced. So you're trying to sign up for a class or look to get into a class, not really knowing what's going to be offered, and is that going to fit into someone's schedule?
And there's no limit as to how many court, um, credits?
There's so many credits that they can take by, in their junior and senior year, and that's eighteen, eighteen.
I was going to say.
Program?
Yes.
A few bucks if you got your schedule right.
Right.
Yeah.
At a four-year university, like Whitewater. Madison.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas.
Hi.
Steve Topol.
Hi.
Donna Delaney.
Hi.
Reverend Imperial.
Hi.
Richard Mason.
Hi, that is approved unanimously. Approval of contract with Soliant Health.
No, Carl Perkins.
Carl Perkins.
I jumped too early.
Carl Perkins, yeah.
Jumped too early. You're trying to get down.
Yeah.
Carl Perkins is a federal grant that's been around as long as I've been around. It's a 66.03 agreement between Cambridge, Deerfield, Johnson Creek, Lake Mills, Marshall, Palmyra Eagle, and Waterloo. Johnson Creek is the fiscal agent because their superintendent is a LVEC, meaning he has the license and technology to be able to oversee the project. It's federally funded money that we use in tech ed, business education, life tech that comes from the government. But you have to be able to have so much before you can get it. So, we have to have a consortium to get to the minimum level for all the schools to be able to get this grant. So, that's your.
Receive Carl Perkins funding for the next five school years. Johnson Creek School District will be the fiscal agent for the agreement.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions on that?
I do. Knowing that this is a grant, do we request a certain dollar amount?
No, they tell, it's by how many students are enrolled in the programs.
So, it's a formula?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then last, I could say, the formula has to add up to a certain amount of money for them to give the money. And for us to get it, we have to do it in a consortium.
And this Perkins funding is renewed?
About every five years.
It is.
The formula, the, the numbers to the formula are different every year.
But the feds make a commitment, a dollar commitment for five years?
Yes. I think it's always been that way, hasn't it, Donna? Five-year plans?
It's an entitlement grant. You just, you get it. You don't compete for it. But he's, or you've got to have a certain trigger number to get, even get into it.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Steve Topol.
Hi.
Donna Delaney.
Hi.
Reverend Imperial.
Hi.
Donna Thomas.
Hi.
Richard Mason.
Hi, that passes unanimously now, the contract with Soliant.
If you remember that we gave a sabbatical to one of our people back for occupational therapists, and we have tried hard to find somebody, and we have always somewhat stayed away from going with clinics or companies, in this case, to find somebody. There's just no other option. Ms. Seeroot has checked out, interviewed, pulled teeth, and Soliant Health has a person that can come here to do our occupational therapy from last week through the end of the school year. And so, I guess we're asking that you would approve that so our students can get the services that they are supposed to have through their IEPs.
Motion.
I move the board approve an agreement with Soliant Health for occupational therapist services for the remainder of the 2014-15 school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the contract with Soliant Health. Questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Donna Delaney.
Hi.
Reverend Imperial.
Hi.
Donna Thomas.
Hi.
Steve Topol.
Hi.
Richard Mason.
Hi, that passes unanimously. And approval of contract for psychological services.
The last one, again, is because we do not have a 512 psychologist, is that there will be some testing and some services that we will need. I've spoken with a gentleman who lives in town, who's a retired person, being that we're not paying him mileage. They came in a rate of about, as you see on there what it is. He's willing to do it for this year and this year only. And I'm very happy that he's willing to do that. So, I would ask that we get into a contract with him. I do not know how many hours a week that is. And I think, I've seen him a couple of times with IEPs that have already been up. It's not much, but they don't always come to our office, so.
I move the board approve a contract with Mr. Cyril Converse for psychological services for the remainder of the 2014 school year, 14-15 school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve contract for psychological services. Questions?
We have the school psychologist position back next year.
We're going to post it again come spring and see what happens.
It's a difficult one to fill.
There's a shortage. I think Donna and I were talking about a 60 Minutes thing that said it's not just in the school business, it's in the private industry and, you know, private people.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Reverend Imperial.
Hi.
Donna Thomas. Steve Topol.
Hi.
Donna Delaney.
Hi.
Richard Mason.
Hi, that passes unanimously. November board agenda items.
I have under the load I think that Bob had asked for time to think about.
The lead?
Lead.
The, putting the jersey in.
We have Baird by that, the resolution.
Well, the Baird resolution you'll do at the 27th meeting.
Twenty-seventh.
Which you feel, you probably should make a decision at that meeting as to the items that you want.
Donna, do you have anything to add?
To add what for the thing?
The November board agenda.
No, don't, it's that's the announcement of the election, too, isn't it?
Yes.
Exit interviews, will they be available by then?
I would hope so.
Anything else? All right.
Okay, I move we adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Pren 1, Pren C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Two items, personnel issues and district administrator contract.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas.
Hi.
Steve Topol.
Hi.
Donna Delaney.
Hi.
Reverend Imperial.
Hi.
Richard Mason.
Hi, that passes unanimously.